All right. Good evening, everybody. So, before we get into it, I'd like to say a few words. So, chairing this meeting does, believe it or not, require a little bit of work. I do want to take the time to thank Vice Chair Golis for being on standby to chair this evening, as the birth of my daughter was actually scheduled for today. So, it was supposed to happen on September 5th, but as is common for the Freeman family, she came early. So, one of the duties of Vice Chair Golis is to stand in, in my absence. And not only was he cheerful in accepting the challenge, but he was just as cheerful when it was time to step back. So, I'm happy to report that Mila Joy Freeman arrived on August 30th, which allowed me to join you this evening, for better or for worse. So, thank you, Vice Chair Golis, for doing the heavy lifting.
Congrats.
Thank you. Before the agenda, I'd like to invite any members of the public for a public comment on anything that's not here tonight, not on our official agenda, if you'd like to come Seeing none, let's go take a look at the August 7th minutes. Did anybody see anything on there that requires correction? All right. Could I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
All right. Second? All right. All in favor to approve minutes? Aye. Unanimous? All right. Thank you. All right. First on the agenda tonight is zoning hearing board, appeal 3157 for 11 West Wayne Avenue. Want to lead into this a little bit, please come up. Last time you appeared in front of us on, I believe, April 3rd. And at the time, we had a rather spirited, I think that's the term, discussion about your proposed plans. And I'd like to think that the planning commission, on one hand, did a fairly good job in making suggestions on how to make your plans work in the context of this property. But at the same time, I do recall that we probably weren't as congenial as we could have been. And as chair, I take responsibility for that. So, any member of the public that comes up in front of us deserves to be heard and respected, regardless of the outcome of the hearing. We serve in the spirit of that, as also Radnor citizens, but also as volunteers. And regardless of our tone that evening, it's clear you've made some revisions, based on what we see. We'll let you speak to that in a minute. And you made the revisions based on our suggestions. So, please introduce yourself and...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. Fred Fromhold. I'm an attorney and represent the applicant in this matter, that is a zoning application that under the code comes before you for a recommendation. And if I can just say preliminarily, I've been to many planning commission meetings over the years, and I did not take from that last planning commission meeting what you're suggesting, that somehow or other, we were roughed up a little bit. I thought the comments obviously were divided. We had a couple of votes that were in favor of the plan that we had presented, and there were others who thought we could do better. And what we're here tonight is to hopefully convince those who thought we can do better that we have done better. And I'd like Dennis O'Neil from McCombie Engineers to go through that site plan with you, but I do want to explain that since that meeting, we never did appear before the zoning board. We, on the evening of that zoning board meeting, met with a couple of neighbors, one in particular. And we have worked with that person to try to make the plan better, make the relief less that we would need from the planning commission, present a nicer frontage of the property with more green and green between the building and the street, essentially eliminate all of the parking in the front yard, which the code frowns on, and says we would need a special exception at a minimum for some of that. And I think we needed a variance for the other. We have the little tail end of the one handicap space that's parallel, that touches and extends slightly into the front yard setback. We have substantially increased the side yard setback on the residential side and the rear yard setback on the residential side behind us. In fact, we would meet the rear yard setback, but for the provision in the code that's somewhat unique to Radnor, that if the lot is a certain length, that you'd need to extend your rear yard setback. So, while we meet the 35-foot setback, we don't meet that extended 38-point, whatever it is, foot setback. So, we're seeking a variance for that. We also have a request for relief that relates to the width of the spaces. Since the spaces are now parallel, we're meeting the subdivision code requirement for the width of those spaces for parallel parking spaces. But that's slightly less than what the required width would be for non-parallel parking spaces under the zoning code. So, what I'd like to have now is Dennis O'Neil to show you the plan, show you the things that we've changed. We have a smaller building. Our commercial office is smaller to the tune of one less parking space is required for this plan. And the living accommodations that are above the office use, they have shrunk considerably. So, with that, I'd like Dennis to talk to you about the plan. Dennis?
And I believe that we are loaded here, Dennis.
My name is Dennis O'Neil. I'm a professional engineer with Herbert McCombie's office in Brumall, and we've been working on the plan. I think, first thing that jumps out, that you'll notice on this revised plan, is that we now have a one-way in and one-way out driveway that wraps around the building.
Mr. O'Neil, sorry to interrupt. Is it possible for you to make the plan a little bit larger? I know you have some tables there, but we can... That'd be great. Maybe a little bit more, if you can. That's perfect. Thank you.
So, you see a narrower wraparound driveway, and as Fred mentioned, we now have a building that is 22-foot wide across the front and 43 feet deep, as compared to the original building, which was 50.66 deep and 26-foot wide. So, we've taken four foot off of the width, and we've taken about seven and a half feet off the length of the building. By moving the driveway to wrap around the building, we've actually increased the distance from the westerly property line, which is the lands of Beavir, to 27.52 feet, and it was originally just at 20 feet. We were right at the 20-foot setback line. You will note that the building does extend slightly into the front yard setback. We're looking at, by removing those parking spaces, allowing for the area to go around the building in the back, we did push the building forward somewhat, but by removing all of the parking spaces that are there, we've reduced the amount of impervious in the front yard substantially. We're about 20 feet from the sidewalk now with green space, 14.74 feet from the right of way line. There are three parallel parking spaces along the driveway. We have put turning templates on those. They all function. And one space at the bottom is a parallel handicap space with a walkway, concrete walkway, for handicap accessibility through to the front of the building, or the front entrance of the building. We are also showing that sidewalk connecting to the sidewalk along West Wayne, to provide access out to the sidewalk. The overall footprint of the building is now 946 square feet, or about 28% smaller than it was previously. We are well under the required building coverage. And the total impervious coverage on this site now sits at about 43.25%, which is less than the 60% requirement. It's about the same as where we were before, when we were in here last time. Some of the impervious cover that we had in the front is now in the driveways going around the side. You'll note that the driveway behind the building is slightly wider than the two driveways coming in on the sides. 12-foot wide driveways in and out, and 15-foot, that's to allow for maneuverability of a larger vehicle around that area. We can get a pickup truck, a large SUV in around here. We can't get the small box trucks, or larger trucks than that, through here, but it wouldn't -- would not be serviced in this building by any of those types of trucks. We are honoring the entire 15-foot buffer around the residential properties to the north and to the west. And before, you may recall, in our earlier plan, we were actually encroaching into that buffer with a small portion of the driveway, which was a turnaround coming out of the garage. So, we've removed that encroachment into the buffer, and we are providing complete buffer on the residential sides. I did also show on this plan a small dotted box rectangle to the east. That's the approximate location of the pizza shop next to us. And I wanted to show that that building and its parking does project further or closer to the street than we do. So, we're not trying to be in front of it with any of our impervious, other than the driveway that comes in. And as Fred indicated, if you project the 20-foot yard, front yard setback, the -- there's a small triangle, probably eight, it's the eight-foot width of it by about six-foot of a triangle, that extends into that 20-foot yard setback. So, that's why we're asking for the special exception and the variance necessary for parking, what we're calling parking in the front yard. The office has been reduced to 487 and a half square feet. We only require two parking spaces for the office use, and we require two parking spaces for the living accommodations above that. And our architect is here, and he'll get into the changes in the architecture a little bit as well. We're showing a planted buffer, softening plantings across the front of the building to lessen that, and a full landscape buffer on both sides to help reduce the impact of a new structure to the neighbors in the residential area. That's essentially the changes in the plan. It's just gotten a lot smaller, probably about 25 to 30% smaller in overall size of the structures and the areas around it. And we think this is a better plan, and we've tried to address many of the comments that the planning commission had previously. And I can answer any questions you have about the plan.
Mr. O'Neil, can you, for the purpose of just calling it out, the prior office, I recall, was 595 square feet, thereabout?
Correct.
And the residential portion was, how many square feet?
It was the 1372 times two floors, so it was about 2,600 square feet.
Okay. So, 27 -- I'm calling it 27.
Sure.
2,800, almost. And today, according to these plans...
So, today, you're, again, you're at 487 square feet of office space. There is a garage and a stairwell to the second floor, second and third floor, which takes up some of that space on the first floor. But then the residential area above it is just under 1,900 square feet total. It's 946 square feet of footprint, times two.
Got it. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. O'Neil?
I have a question. Since there's office space in here, who is responsible for taking the trash away? Would that be the township, if it's -- since there's commercial?
So, as a rule, we don't do the commercial properties? Right? That's on them?
So, how, where's the trash? How does that work?
So, we have space in the garage for storage of lawn care equipment and trash receptacles. The garage is deep enough or wide enough that it would hold a car, plus those accessory uses that might typically be found in a shed that we don't have room for.
So, how does the truck come to remove the waste? How does that work? Is it big? And is the side area large enough, from a practical standpoint?
From a practical standpoint, we believe it is. And it would be, it would not be a dumpster-type trash. It would be cans, similar to what you would use for residential use.
I live across the street, so I can tell you that the way trash works on West Wayne is the Radnor trash trucks stop in the street. We load the street, all the neighbors load the street with cans, on the street, basically. I think the same thing could apply here. I would assume, Steve, that a private haul, trash hauler would, could just stop in front, if there are cans out there, right?
I think so. Not to speak for the private haulers, but I think that's how they would do it. The resident, the residents, they get trash service from the township, street pickup, like Mr. Golis noted, and I would hazard a guess, that's how the commercial folks would do it, too.
Didn't the original plan also have, in the back of the house, some sort of like a balcony? Is that still there?
It did, and this does not exist on this plan. There is a overhang on the parking lot side, but it's well within the setbacks, and it projects five feet out, over top of the walkway and part of the grass area in the front.
There's no renderings of the...
There are renderings, yeah. Let me...
I think the last plan, Commissioner, and that, the objection was to the balcony on the other side, facing residential. This would be facing commercial, the pizza shop.
So...
Gotcha.
Yeah. You can see that the, along that backside, that balcony is gone, and now there's just a balcony, doesn't even extend the full length of the front elevation, and projects out five feet. There was also, in the original plan, you may recall, a large deck on the third floor, which has been removed.
Any further questions?
Chairman, just forgive my, I guess, my naïveté. I was not at this meeting. How are you handling stormwater?
Stormwater, it's not on the current plan that I have before you, but it will be underground, under the parking area. And we had previously designed a basin, so we know about how many square feet, cubic feet of basin we need, and there's been some soil testing done. We're pretty confident we'll get infiltration and be able to size a basin. With this design of the driveway, I suspect everything, I haven't graded it yet, but everything will drain towards the front, towards the street. Probably have a couple of inlets in this driveway, pipe it across, and then all this will drain down to an inlet and into a basin that sits under, probably under the driveway.
We'll get a crack at that.
In land development.
If they come back to us from zoning. Any other questions, Commissioners? We're ready to hear from the architect? Mr. O'Neil?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, my name's John Hertz. I'm Mr. Zoo's architect. As Dennis said, the building and everything else has been substantially reduced. The five, let me see if I can do Kevin's thing here. The less than 500-square-foot office is based just for your own general knowledge on the outside wall measurement, and then I took the center line of that common wall between the residential entrance and the office itself. And that's where that 487.15 square feet came from. The only real residential parts down here are the garage itself, and as Dennis said, we had, we didn't need a lot of room in here. We just needed a stairwell and an entrance access. So, we put the rest of that in the garage, and it allows us to do trash cans, recycling. My client drives an electric car, so we have a charging station, lawn tractor, some kids' stuff, bicycles. He has two young daughters. And we wanted to get as much of that inside the building as we could. The dash line here is the balcony that Dennis was talking about. Here's the crosswalk that you saw on the site, and then up the handicap accessible ramp, you know, to an entrance into the office, and then stairs from the garage, so that the client, my client can just enter his home with the stairs. The second floor is living space. You go up the stairs, there's a family room, closet, kitchen and dining area, a small pantry, powder room slash bathroom, and then a children's study area. And then doors out onto the balcony. So, they do have some outdoor space that comes with the property. And then on the third floor, it's the private sleeping areas, a master bedroom with a closet, a bathroom that is sort of a faux master bathroom, if you will, because you can also access it from the hallway, a small laundry room, and then two more bedrooms for the children. And that's it. We are at just over 1,800 square feet of living space. Again, down from approximately 2,600 square feet with a, with about a 500-square-foot roof deck. So, there's been an awful lot eliminated from the, from the building itself. I hope that comes up. Oh, there you go. So, there's a general sort of view from Wayne Avenue, with, you know, the crosswalk there and the wraparound driveway, the green sort of foundation plantings there in the front of the building, and then the buffers planted on the left side of the building where the residential zoning begins. I guess I have to keep going back down. There's, I guess, kind of, if you were coming around the corner, and gives you a better idea for where that balcony sits in relationship to the rest of the building and the lot. That's the, not really looking from the townhouses behind it, but from that general direction, you can see all the buffer, the plantings, you know, and how it looks sort of from that back right-hand corner. That is from the residential side of the property. I just wanted to kind of show that, although it's a, you know, it's symbolic at best, there's plenty of buffering there to sort of hide this...
It's a fairly optimistic view of your vegetation.
Yes. Hide this, you know, I guess, hide, I hate to use the word hide, block this building from the residential side.
We like tree canopy here.
You know, yeah.
You're doing fine.
Radnor's a huge tree place. And it really looks actually very residential, from this view. So, and then, just as a thing I wanted to show, that's a bird's-eye view of the site and kind of how it's going to look, you know, if you fly by. So, any questions from anyone?
So, just as a recap, the size of the bedroom number two and bedroom number three are, could you just refer back to that?
Yeah. Let's see. Oh, no. Where'd that went?
My recollection is that they were quite modest.
Yeah, there you go. Yes, they are.
Just state for the record, are modest.
So, they're only 100 and, well, I've learned from clients that have children, that I try and keep all the bedrooms as close to the same size as possible, because it eliminates some of that sibling banter, we shall say.
Unless you have four kids, like me.
Yeah. I got three, so I know. I learned early. But yeah, they're both the same width, and then, just based on the floor plan, the one on the right is like 10 by 13, and the one on the left is 10 by 12. So, they're pretty similar. I'm showing a queen-size bed with a nightstand, and then a dresser for clothing. And they both have a small closet.
Okay. Thank you.
And they both have egress windows and all the things they're going to need further down the road.
Commissioners, some questions for Mr. Hertz?
Yeah, I just have a question. Regarding the parking, the garage itself allows for one car?
Yes, correct.
So, is the idea that the residential portion's going to be limited to one car?
No. We have three outdoor spaces, a regular space, a handicap space, and then those two are for the office building. And then we have two for the residential, the third exterior spot, and then one inside the garage.
So, how many people are going to be working in the, how many people are going to be working in the office, and how many people are going to be visiting?
To the best of my knowledge, one, possibly two, will be working. My client is using that office for his, he's a real estate agent, and he's using that office for his, for his own work. I can't say specifically, but I do not think there are any employees. Nope. No. So, no employees. So, my guess is one, like, pretty much one person, and I guess if a client shows up, then there's, you know, parking.
Any other questions for Mr. Hertz?
Just to clarify, on the first floor, there is, you call it a powder room, but is that a, is that a shower tub?
Yeah. It is a full bath.
So, there's a full bath, there's one full bath on the first floor, and then, when you talked about the faux, there's also one full bath on the second floor.
Yes, a full bath on the second floor, and then a powder room on the street level, a handicap accessible powder room on the street-level floor for the office.
That's part of the office?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd just like to say that I've been near neighbors to this property for 37 years, and it's been a overgrown lot with ash trees for 37 years. So, it's, as far as I'm concerned, it's a nice project for West Wayne. And I also appreciate the fact that apparently you've talked to the Beavers.
Yeah, I have not personally, but yes.
But somebody has talked to the Beavers, who are the near neighbors, not the folks.
Yes.
So, I commend you on that, because that doesn't always happen.
Right. Well, thank you. It was, it was everybody, but I'll take it.
Any other questions?
Chairman, I don't have a question, but I just wanted to state for the record...
Chairman, I don't have a question, but I just wanted to state for the record that I'm encouraged to see this proposal. This is what in the industry you call a live-work unit. And it's a sign that economies are changing and the way we go to work and the way we kind of meld work and living into one space. I, I think we need to have like a, not now, not today, but maybe in the comp planning work or when we can step out and zoom out a little bit to see how we can retrofit some of our communities to be this way.
Duly noted. And that's the work of Radnor at this point, right? I do have a question and I, Mr. Hertz, I don't know if this is for you. I want to talk a little bit about our parking requirements in terms of dimensions. So there's, you're, you're asking for us to use the SALDO standard on parking dimensions rather than the zoning ordinance standard. So SALDO stipulates an eight-foot wide spot and 22 in length. Our zoning standard is nine and a half by 20. I think it's nine and a half by 20, right? Tell us a little bit more about what you're asking. I think that's a question for Mr. Fromhold or Mr. O'Neill.
I'm going to let Dennis field that one.
And I, I do want to say that this isn't a dress rehearsal for zoning hearing board. We just like to hear your rationale for the record.
I think the zoning ordinance nine and a half by 20 contemplates pull-in and pull-out parking. The subdivision land development ordinance allows for a different parking space size for parallel parking because you need a couple of extra feet of length in order to be able to back in and back out of a, or pull in or pull out of a parallel parking space. So I think that's why the zoning or subdivision ordinance allows the 22-foot length. As far as the eight-foot length goes, the nine and a half foot or 10-foot or that you see in some ordinances is because you have to pull a car in there and you want to be able to open doors on both sides and not hit the car adjacent to it. In a, in a parallel parking situation, you don't have that, that same requirement. So in many ordinances, subdivision ordinances, they do allow a different standard for parallel parking. And your ordinance does allow that if you were to be designing parallel parking for the eight by 22, and that's what we'd like to use. I think the request is an abundance of caution. We don't want to get to subdivision of land development and a zoning comment come up that says you need a nine by 20 parking space or nine and a half foot wide parking space. So we just want to make sure that everyone is on board with the, with the eight-foot for the parallel parking. But it is an industry standard to have an eight-foot wide parallel parking space.
Okay. Good enough. Any further questions before we hear from the public?
And Mr. Chairman, I just want to acknowledge that a member of the public had been very helpful to us in making sure that we were focused on all of these code provisions so that we are asking for all the relief that we will need and we don't leave something behind. And in fact, that particular item was brought to our attention that we should seek that variance and so we do.
Thank you. All right, let's hear from the public.
Hi, Baron Gemmer, South Wayne Avenue. I had interest in this property and met the applicant and his team at the zoning hearing board meeting. Our resident, our old residence, which is now a rental unit, is about 1,200 feet from here and often are, I'm by the park and come off the park to, to West Wayne or to Highland and we often tout it for our, our rental tenants. So it drew my interest. I saw this and saw some of the issues with it that this board brought up as well as I had in mind. And I just wanted to briefly talk about how it improved those. Since I don't hear a lot of contention, I don't want to use everybody's time up at how, how it did improve the plan. The office space staying close to 500 is important because that's the threshold for the two parking spaces and not going to three. But this is a commercial district and we do want to see the commercial district stay, stay vibrant. I was on a committee probably 15, 20 years ago for C1 in West Wayne area. And so it's important that it's not just diminished in order to make parking work and have it be of just primarily residence. So I think the, that the balance between the residence and the office here is very good in terms of what it, what it needs to be for parking. The going the one-way, one of the issues that I spoke with the applicant and his team about was the, the two-way driveway before. It was very problematic for vehicles on their own where some vehicle could enter and then not have a space and have to back out or figure out what they're doing. And now if they don't find a space, they can go all the way around. But it was even worse for pedestrians. And again, as someone that traverses this on bike and, and running, I know how bad it's Vic and Dean's is to begin with. So making a 25-foot driveway where, where the front yard parking was blocking those, the, the view of the drivers coming in and out was, was, was really bad. This is great. The exit is a long stretch coming out where you're only crossing 12 feet and you can see plenty of cars. The other one is the entrance, again, only 12 feet and no, that's where that small front yard parking is, nothing's being blocked there. So from a pedestrian standpoint, which is heavy there, it was much improved. The, also with the one-way driveway, that kind of mimics what St. George Hunt does, although their parking is way more convoluted than this. This, this is very orderly, which is why the eight-foot should not be an issue because they've got the five-foot of grass on the side to open the door and everything. So the presentation was good, so I'm not going to reiterate any other points, but I just wanted to bring up those, that the plan was much improved in a lot of safety areas as well as the vibrancy of the, the economics there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baron, or Mr. Gemmer. Any other members of the public? Okay. So you've been busy. We can see that. This is one of those plans where you came, you listened, you revised. The changes are substantial. You are asking for three variances and a special exception, which is predicated upon a variance. And it's a lot. However, the, I do believe that the size, the magnitude of what you're asking for is very little. This is a modest development on a non-conforming lot. And I think you've done a nice job. So I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval to the zoning hearing board. If I can get a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Pleasure. Okay, folks. Next up is, we've got some land development items. I will say that Eastern University had asked us to table. So if you're here for that, you will get, get a chance to talk to them at our subsequent meetings. Next up is application 210028, Land Development, Villanova University, the storage building.
Evening, Nick Canilia, representing the applicant, Villanova University. This is over at the Inn at Villanova University on County Line Road. So it's not on a main campus, is where they, they used to call the conference center is located. It's a 30-foot by 60-foot, one-story storage building. It complies with all the zoning requirements. The building is located adjacent to the railroad tracks and the Blue Route is approximately 290 feet from the nearest residential property line. It's 500 feet from County Line Road, so it's tucked back from County Line Road. We're asking for three waivers. One, that the board consider this as a preliminary final. Two, the typical waiver regarding 500 feet showing utilities within 500 feet. And then also the transportation impact study. This is not increasing any traffic. It's being used for storage for the inn itself. It's not being used for any other university's storage. It's really for storage at the site itself. We have discussed this at various neighbors' meetings with the neighbors on County Line Road. And then we have been in communication with the one residential neighbor who is the closest to the property. I'll bring up Karen McManus, a registered civil engineer, and she'll run through the plans for you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Canilia.
Good evening, Karen McManus with Villanova University. As Nick said, I am a registered civil engineer. So this is a proposed rendering for the storage building. As Nick said, we did have some meeting with the neighbors back in January. We had a meeting at the end and went over a couple of projects. At that time, this building was proposed to be at a different location. We had some neighbors opposed to that, so we went back and we reevaluated everything. So we relocated it a lot further away from any neighbor property line. We were at the Shade Tree and there was one comment about the, a tree protection fence. Other than that, we got approval from the Shade Tree meeting. So this is an aerial. You can see this is County Line Road here. So the storage building is down the main driveway, down the hill, and it's going to be located here. So the closest neighbor properties are in, in the trees over here. So these are photographs. So this one is looking south as I come down the main driveway down the hill. Currently, there's a storage unit there. This was there as they're renovating the carriage house. So some of the stuff that was in the carriage house is temporarily stored in these units. This is the elevation coming in from Matson Ford Road. This is the storage unit there. And then this is a photograph standing at this storage unit, looking up towards the neighbor's property. You can see that it's heavily wooded.
All right, just a quick question here. These storage units, I would suppose, would be gone, right?
Oh, yes. Yeah, they'll be gone.
Okay.
That's, that's what this building's for. Everything will be moved into this building. So this is the overall site plan. Again, this is County Line Road. This is the main driveway coming down. You can see it's at the bottom of the hill here beside the tennis courts. So this is, it, we're, as Nick said, 290 feet from the closest property line. And we're, I believe, 90 feet from the property line there. This is an enlarged plan. So these were the old tennis courts, so it's tucked in here. This is the main driveway coming down and can go right into this storage building. This is an area over here, there's an existing pool house and bocce court, which is going to be demolished as part of this project and graded out. So we're eliminating all the impervious area over here and grading that out. We are putting back a walkway here to connect to the bridge and the pathway that goes up to the inn. Again, this is a rendering for the building. The waivers Nick had mentioned that we're requesting, preliminary final, the transportation impact, and then the existing principal building surrounding. And that was, that was pretty much it.
Thank you, Mr. McManus.
You're welcome. I will go on to say we had receipt for the review letters from Gannett and Fleming and Gilmore and the fire marshal. We do plan to comply with everything. They were very minor comments.
Got it. Thank you. Any questions for the engineer? Okay. Staff comment?
I don't have anything that, I agree, all the comments in our letters were very perfunctory in nature.
Anything from Gilmore?
Yeah, there was just a few minor comments about the driveway there, so nothing major on our end.
Okay. So, subject to we'll comply on all the items. Commissioners, do you have any further questions, comments? All right, I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval in the matter of application 210028. Yeah, that's right. Any public comment? No. Thank you for keeping me honest. All right, like to make a motion to approve? All right, second by minds. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Good luck.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, application 209601, 14 Farriston Land Development. Applicant is proposing to subdivide the property, construct new single-family dwelling on a new lot while existing dwellings shall remain.
My name is Michael Waggoner. I am from HAL Engineering and I am sitting in for Justin Brewer, who is the engineer of record. I'm a landscape architect, land planner with them. I do know this project because I've been to the Shade Tree Commission several times.
If you could, other way. Thank you. Probably easier for you as well.
I know the plan in and out. Tonight, I'm here just to field any questions and then possibly go over the review letters and then maybe also the waivers that we're requesting and then hopefully to get final approval. So I guess, just as a, a short history, this piece is already, this building is actually already being built as we speak right now. So the subdivision has pretty much already gone through. This building has already been, like I said, is already under construction, probably two-thirds of the way. If you look at Google Maps, you can actually see that they've updated it. So part of the-
Excuse me, if I can just correct something that you said before we go too far. The subdivision has not gone through. This is the subdivision that's in front of you. What was done was that was a single lot where a house was demolished and a new house was constructed and that was done under a grading permit. Subsequent to the grading permit approval, the applicant has come back to subdivide the property and build a second home.
Got it. Thank you. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Yes, as you mentioned, yes, now we're going through the subdivision process. Same type house is going to be built there. It's just going to, the driveway entrance is going to be a little bit different than what this, the circular driveway was. This is basically the layout for the new house. So as you can see, we have the existing one that was torn down and being rebuilt and then the existing house that's back here will be removed and then a new, new home will be constructed in the same, in that location. So if, so I said, tonight I'm here just to field some questions and to find out if we can move forward.
Okay, sounds great. You've met with Shade Tree?
Yep.
And what was the outcome of that meeting?
Outcome was that they gave us the approval to move forward. The only thing that I ended up having to do was put together a hazardous tree permit, which was done. Your arborist went out and took a look at the tree that was, was questionable and he conceded that it was in decline and needed to be removed. It was more of a hazard. And even the neighbor who lives here, too, had questioned some of the trees that were there because he felt that they were hazards also. But the majority of the plant material unfortunately is coming down because of the way the house is laid out in the grading. But we have put together a tree replacement plan to take care of all the replacements that would be needed for that project.
Is that a fair character there? Okay. Can you walk us through the request to waive curbing in sidewalks along Farriston and curbing along Radnor?
The idea is that since there is no curbing already on Farriston, to put curbing on there would not be beneficial. Right now, it is just pavement to, to, to grass. As for the sidewalk, there will be an additional sidewalk piece here that'll be added. Right now, the sidewalk runs this way and then dead ends. It'll be jogged and then it'll connect to the existing sidewalk that's already there. There'll be a handicap ramp or handicap accessibility on the other side with the new sidewalk. Any additional curbing up, up Radnor Road was not something that the applicant was willing to do. And that's where the waivers come in.
What's the rationale for not adding sidewalk on Farriston?
There is no sidewalk there now.
We, we get that, but you're subdividing. We get that, but you're subdividing. Therefore, the requirement comes into play.
And therein lies the request for the waiver. We feel that the sidewalk is a sidewalk to nowhere.
Mr. Narsini.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So a couple of things. I'd like to jump back to the sidewalk. So you're jogging it and connecting to existing sidewalk?
Yes, connecting to the existing sidewalks out there, and then it would jog to line up so the crosswalk would match the existing sidewalks on the other side of Fariston.
So what is the width of the existing sidewalk?
My understanding, the width of the sidewalk is three feet wide, and we're just going to match that.
So our requirement is four feet wide? So my suggestion would be that all the sidewalk on Radnor Street be consistent, be four-foot. This is subdivision, as Chairman Fruman noted. So my suggestion would be that you replace the existing to come up with four-foot sidewalk along Radnor Street. And at the ADA ramp you noted, down by Fariston. What is across the street? Is there an ADA ramp there?
Here?
Yes.
Yes, there is, correct.
So then I would also recommend that you install a continental crosswalk there?
There is a crosswalk striping that's going to be put into place there.
It's the two six-inch white lines?
Correct.
Yeah. We've been trying to go to continental crosswalks because they are more noticeable to motorists. And so, yes, sidewalk to nowhere, possibly. Also, could be the beginning of sidewalk as other houses may or may not be taken down along Fariston. So my recommendation to the commission would be to, A, install a four-foot sidewalk, four-foot wide sidewalk, all along Radnor Street Road. Continue that all along the frontage of both properties. Two things. So hopefully someday, it will connect. In the short term, those folks have a sidewalk where maybe their kids can do chalk art and have fun at on their sidewalks or for other pedestrians. And then, so there is existing curbing below this project on Radnor Street, correct?
Correct, yes. Here and here.
And does that, does that one continue down further? I'm sorry. When you cross the street, if you follow that radius, does that continue down Radnor Street?
Yes, it does.
So that would be another recommendation. Just to match what is there would be to put curbing. I know your, the applicant doesn't wish to do so, but that would just be to follow along what is there. And my last, no, probably not my last one. As we follow that sidewalk up towards Valley Forge Military Academy property, what happens up there?
It just, the sidewalk just dead-ends.
And what is over the property line, Trigiferan?
My understanding is there's no sidewalk there either.
And again, I would recommend that that be carried to the property line at a four-foot width. Maybe as the Valley Forge Military Academy at one point develops further, that can again be a nice aspect for pedestrians. So I told you it wasn't my last question. So can we get to the stormwater management system?
Before we get into that, what was your recommendation, Mr. Narsini, on Fariston Road itself? Sidewalk, curb?
I didn't see the need for curb because there is no existing, but sidewalk, my recommendation is yes. Four-foot sidewalk on Radnor Street or Radnor Road and all of Fariston. As you said, sir, this is a subdivision. This is the time these things come in. Curbing on Radnor Street only. And I'll back up. The sidewalk, again, in my opinion, my humble opinion, should run the length of Radnor Street to the Trigiferan line slash property line, four-foot in width.
It extends there. However, it's a redstone.
Okay. Got it. All right. You want to get into stormwater management, I suppose?
Yes, sir. If we could, if you want to step through the stormwater management system?
Well, my understanding is it's an underground system. It's going to be a plastic-type situation on the outside, again filled full of crushed stone, a lot like a large underground French drain. All the downspouts and then also the yard drains will go to that, as will the grading.
And what is the overflow for that system?
That I do not have on me. I'm sorry, I do not have that part. Well, the overflow would probably, it looks like there's a pipe that comes out and will be the overflow, and then it'll run out into the street.
I can't discern that from, I'm sorry, with the clarity on the screens versus the plan. So that is the overflow? Is that what's noted on the plan?
Yes, correct.
The last time we spoke, I believe it was represented that the system is oversized for what is required?
Correct.
And is that still true?
Correct.
By what percentage?
My understanding, by 10%. It's that little fudge factor, I guess, if you want to call it.
So we had one of the residents, either the adjacent resident or the resident downstream, noted their concern for stormwater management. It's an older neighborhood, 70s, 80s. Stormwater management is rudimentary at best with what they have. It's an inlet in the front yard with a stone pit about the size of where you're standing. So it really doesn't do much. So they do have concern. So understand the overflow has to be at the low point, and it's going to go out into the street. I would just request, if at all possible, it looks like you have the space, is to increase that, so you call it a fudge factor, which is, in my mind, I interpret as a rounding factor, is to increase the size of that stormwater management system, understanding that when it does overflow, and it will, it's going to go down the street and, you know, understanding the grades that work there, but that would be a nice give to the neighbors who live below you. I think that's all I have, Commissioner Fruman.
That's all?
So you'd like to see it increased in the size of the underground storage itself?
Yeah, so you had noted 10% as a fudge factor. I take that as like a rounding factor. I'm not sure what you meant by that. I think it would be, again, in my humble opinion, to increase that X more percent in deference to the folks downstream from you.
Okay.
For recording purposes, can you please speak into the mic when you speak?
Okay. No problem.
I have a question for Steve and Roger and the other commissioners. The last time this project was before us, and the Fariston stuff gets confusing because there's two Faristons going on at the same time. I thought I heard issues about Chester County, about part of this property being in Chester County.
There was a how, there was a structure that was on this property and also in Trigiferan, Chester County, in that upper left-hand corner. And that was one of the questions. Will that be completely demolished or is the piece going to be left in Chester County?
And there was one other thing that I thought I remembered, and that was the deed. There were some questions about who, the ownership of this. Was it Valley Forge still or was it the developer? So, and I think that was unanswered at our last meeting. And you weren't here, so for that. It was someone else, so.
If you look on the title sheet or the cover sheet, you will see that the record owner applicant is Valley Forge Military Academy, but the equitable owner is the custom home builder. So I'm assuming they're in partnership.
We have a review comment that's asking for clarity on that, but if I had to guess, is that the transaction has not been completed from the Military Academy to the builder until at the time when they, when they get their approvals?
So is that, is that something that holds, that we should put some brakes on for?
I don't think so. As long as, when we go to the final approval and it goes before the Board of Commissioners, we'll have a set of drawings that are signed by the Military Academy, giving them, you know, asserting the approval that they can go forward with this.
I have one question.
Go ahead.
So in the back of the property on the Radnor Street roadside, is there a, like a drop from the sidewalk?
I didn't hear your question.
So the sidewalk that is currently there in the back of the property, it looks like there was a cutout to allow for vehicles to go in, but it looks like it's an uneven grade, that it's a step down?
I'm not familiar with that piece of it.
Any other questions?
I have a question. Can you point to me the high point on this property? Can you point to me the lowest point on the property?
I have here by the street.
Okay.
There's a tennis court up here that it's already screened a little bit, so this sits a lot higher over here. So everything's sheeting this way.
Mr. Phillips, do you have any additional comments?
No, I don't believe so, as long as they assert that they're going to meet the items in my letter.
Got it. How about Gilmore?
All of the items we have were already discussed by Steve regarding the ADA ramp and sidewalk, so nothing else.
Okay. So just to summarize the requests by Mr. Narsini, or suggestions, let me frame it as suggestions. You're suggesting a continental crosswalk across Fariston, four-foot sidewalks on Fariston, no curb, four-foot sidewalks on Radnor Street Road with curb. And give us a rundown on how to characterize your request on stormwater.
Yes, it was somewhat nebulous in that leaving it to the builder to come up with an additional percentage that they'd be willing to increase the system by.
Are you willing to stipulate?
I would hope to see not a fudge factor of 10%, but an additional 10% on top of that. So 10% on top of what's there.
So 10% on top, okay.
Got it. Is that 11% or 20?
That would be 10% greater than what is proposed as-
What is proposed, okay.
So that's 10% over existing fudge factor and going over.
How about I just say holding capacity instead of fudge factor?
Let's say 10% cubic foot increase over what is shown on the plan today.
Okay.
10% cubic foot storage increase.
Commissioners, any discussion on crosswalk curbing? So what would serve you best? Is that we table and you come back to us or that we take a vote now?
Well, my only concern is that I have to talk to the applicant and whether or not they want to put sidewalks in and where they want to go with that. We've requested a waiver for that, and obviously it doesn't look like I'm going to get it. So I'm assume that we should probably table it until I hear, because I cannot say, yes, we will do this. I cannot say that until I talk to the applicant.
Okay. It sounds like the applicant would like to table. Is public comment appropriate at this point? We'll ask for it anyway. Any public comment on this? Okay, hearing none. Let's take a vote to table. Motion to table?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. We'll see you again.
No, I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
All right. Pleasure. All right. Application 209748, 150 to 168 Lancaster Ave. Applicant is requesting preliminary final land development plan approval.
We're seeing this several times, I believe, at least twice, I believe, if not three times have seen this plan previously. It's basically the same plan that you did review prior to zoning. This is the corner of Luella and Lancaster Avenue. I believe you're looking at the Lancaster Avenue view in the photograph that Rob pulled up. Rob Lambert, the civil engineer, is here, as well as Matt Berger for the applicant. We had several meetings with the neighbors prior to the zoning hearing. We've stayed in touch with the Condominium Association and their board during this process currently. You may recall, it's existing retail and apartments up top, kind of a worn building. I think Rob also has photographs of what the existing conditions are. What we're proposing here is to slightly reduce the retail. We are proposing 24 residential apartments with basement-level parking. The site, like every property in Wayne pretty much, is currently non-conforming as to parking. Actually, we're reducing the nonconformity by adding parking spaces for the apartments in the basement of the structure. So all the apartments will comply with the parking requirement. We still have the retail portion that is nonconforming.
And you've received relief on this already, so-
Right.
So this is nothing new.
Yeah, yeah. This is all nothing new. We had relief from the zoning board on the parking, off-street loading, and rear and front yard setbacks. Mainly, this building's totally nonconforming, takes up the whole site. Asking for two waivers, one preliminary final, and the other one, which Roger pointed out, is we need the waiver on the 500 feet, all utilities within 500 feet, which was not requested, but we would be requesting, at least not requested in the application, but we do need a waiver for that and would request that as well. I'll turn it over to Rob.
Good evening. Rob Lambert here on behalf of the applicant. I'll flip through a couple of slides just so you can see the ones Nick referred to. So this was the proposed rendering from Lancaster Avenue side. Just a note, this hasn't been updated since the zoning plan. There's actually parking on Luella, on the side of Luella that doesn't show up on this rendering.
One quick question, because if you could go back.
Yep.
And I don't want to interrupt, but there's like, to the left, there's a white car and a red car that, that's not a two-lane road, so I assume one of those is parked?
No, I think it's really just a perspective issue. I think the one's just further down the hill, and the other one's further up the hill there. I think it's just because it's trying to show that where the hill is.
So they're both just driving down Luella?
They're both just driving down, correct. So these are just the existing conditions. I think many of you have seen this, so I'll go through quickly. This is the side, Luella side of the building. And the rear, the one thing I will note are the set of steps here. And so we're trying to clean up a lot of this side of the building with the improvements so that right now, these parking spaces actually go to a basement-level retail area with a set of steps coming up to Lancaster. And when you get up to Lancaster, it's a little bit of an awkward crossing, and some of the comments talk about that. So you can see the angled crossing right here on Lancaster. So that's the back and the front side. And then we get into the plan, what Nick had mentioned about the waiver for the features within 500 feet. Many times, we provide the aerial. We're happy to supplement it with whatever's needed from the township engineer, but we provide the aerial to provide features within 500 feet of the site. It's a pretty routine here. So we have the review letters. Happy to go through them individually. Everything's really, will comply. Just let me know your preference, and I can quickly go through if you like, or-
So I think, you know, unless our other commissioners would disagree here, they are pretty standard review letters with two exceptions. So one exception is that you have not yet dimensioned parking, which is a concern. And the other concern is that you have not yet finalized the status of that crosswalk with all the, all the required parties.
So the first one said the W B O D has nine-by-18 parking spaces. It is kind of a separate section for W B O D. And related to that section is also some of the lighting and landscaping comments that are really specific to W B O D. the lighting and landscaping comments that are really specific to WBOD. As far as the crosswalk, we're happy to meet, you know, actually after getting this letter, reach out to staff, meet with staff, go over the crosswalk. Ultimately, that's gonna be PennDOT, because we're gonna have to involve PennDOT in how that works. What we're actually proposing, and we have to look at, is to kind of rectilinearize it, right? Instead of having a long angled crosswalk there, is to try to get the full crosswalk. And what you can see is there's actually a hatched area on the north side of Lancaster. The reason we have that hatch is that's actually access to an alley loading zone. And so, you know, one of the discussions with the township and PennDOT is, is can we terminate this basically straight across? So the distance is actually probably shorter to a sidewalk, clearly shorter to a place of refuge in between the parked parking spaces, but bring that straight across Lancaster Avenue rather than that long angle. One of the things we did do is on the Luella side of the building is actually eliminate all those stairs that I mentioned. And so that's actually just a walkway going up. We've changed all those parking spaces. Earlier on, we were actually getting rid of a lot of the parking spaces. After early meetings, we've left all the parking spaces along Luella, added a sidewalk there, and that sidewalk goes up along the side of the building. So if you're walking from the south, you can actually cross. There's a HOA building that sticks out, actually a little bit beyond the right-of-way, but you cross, and then you can step back along the sidewalk, and then come up to Lancaster, either go down the south side, or ideally go directly across, is what we were trying to achieve.
I will say, you know, I want to be sympathetic to the complexities of the site, and there are several. My preference is obviously to see more. Commissioners, what questions you have?
Can you just go over the parking plan, as well as ingress egress, or the garage again?
Yep. So, let's see here, can I zoom in?
As well as what? There's, I'm sorry, there's 20, 24 units?
24 units, that's correct.
So it's 24 units, and how many spaces?
We had a total of 28 parking spaces.
Just the breakdown is, what, 21 bedrooms and four chews?
Matt Johnson with Berger Development. Yeah, 24 total units. We have four units that are over 800 square feet, which require two parking spaces, and then we have 20 units that are under 800 square feet, which require one parking space. And, I mean, the units that are over 800 are gonna wind up being two-bedroom units. The units that are under are gonna be one-bedroom.
And we actually have an inset on the lower left-hand side of Sheet 3. It shows the, really, the layout, so you're really gonna have kind of a dead-end area. These are meant to be, you know, assigned to the building, parking spaces, so not necessarily the general public going in to access those. And then the access is off of Luella, existing, there's an existing alley in between the two buildings now. We're looking to widen that alley actually out to where the driveway entrance is. That was, again, an early comment. So we've widened that driveway as it comes in, to be able to then turn into the underground parking. So you can see the bottom right-hand corner is really the bottom right-hand corner as it's over the area. So on upper floors, we'll actually project out over that widened area, but you'll be able to pull into the building at that point. Did that answer your question?
Is that layout, is that dimensioned?
It is.
Or roughly dimensioned?
Let me see. I can actually... It's 28 feet. I have easier eyes down here.
Okay. Our concern is that you won't meet the requirement.
So I think it actually might exceed the requirement, being 28.
Okay.
One thing I did want to bring up was stormwater. And so we've actually proposed two different stormwater solutions. We've fully designed them and submitted them. One solution is actually building it underneath the building, and so in between column lines, we actually would build a concrete vault system. It would rely on pumps to pump it out. Many times, when you have a building with, that covers most of the lot to meet the stormwater requirement, you're doing something really building-integrated, right? And so this is a building-integrated system. It would be under the building, a vault system, and discharge out to the existing collection system. We have an alternative that we also designed, and this one was actually underneath part of Luella and part of Luella parking spaces. It remained 10 feet off of the building, per one of the comments. This system's about 20% larger than the one in the building, and we would capture more kind of extra areas into the system. This was a result of meeting with township staff and talking about what we were proposing, and it was brought up, you know, wouldn't it be beneficial to actually have a little bit better, bigger system, relies completely on gravity? We wouldn't have any pump system, and be able to actually capture more water and potentially treat more water, right? Is putting it in the building, we're only treating our water. Putting it outside of the building, we'll actually be able to capture some more water, run it through the system. So instead of having a lot of volume that you don't, that you use very infrequently, you'll likely be using a lot more of this volume on a regular basis. Obviously, this would need the board's approval, so kind of at the next step, we can, we'll be asking for their permission to build within the street right-of-way if they'd like us to.
Thank you for letting us know about that. It's not a requirement for us to dive too deep into it, but we appreciate the look. Commissioners, any?
Yeah, I, my concern is, is obviously is parking. I just, I just think you're gonna need more parking, and I guess with the retail, obviously you're keeping, looks like you're keeping the retail spaces there, or the parking for the retail. What about for the employees that currently work there? Where are they gonna be able to park?
So currently, there's a similar amount of retail on-site that we're proposing. It's really, we're really modernizing the retail, right? It's from a square footage standpoint, getting better ceiling heights, things like that. And then in addition to that, there's actually, I believe it was, nine apartments currently exist on-site with no parking. And so we're actually providing parking for not only all the apartments, we have a few extra spaces that, whether it can be for some employee parking, there is obviously all of the street parking that we're maintaining along Lancaster and Luella. So there is, you know, a sufficient amount of parking.
Commissioner, in that, I think they have all the parking that they need. They did get relief on that from both us and ZHB. And you did mention that you're reducing retail square footage?
Just slightly, yes.
Okay. By how many square feet? Just off the top of your head is fine.
I think it was a couple hundred.
Okay.
I'd rather get the number here. Let's see here, we had...
For some reason, it seemed to be from 10,000 to 300.
It's not gonna be a direct correlation, because, yeah, we're reducing, again, 500 square feet of the lobby. In our table, it has retail use and restaurant use, and so if you just looked at the retail use row, it's actually gonna look like it goes up, but the restaurant use is excluded from that, just the way the parking code works. I just wanted to point that out.
Sure. And, you know, for the record, they've received that relief, both from us and ZHB, so they're good to go there. Any other commissioners?
Yeah, I just, I have a question for staff. Basically, it's, so, so the, what I see here that's under, still has to be reviewed either by, directly with the township or sidebar conversations with state agencies, is curb, the issue of curb ramps, the issue of crosswalks, the issue of trash pickup, the issue of stormwater, which system we go with, given the 10 feet to the building to protect the building's foundation, and pavement restoration. So those are the things I see hanging, so I just want somebody smarter than me to say it doesn't matter on the approval process, those five things, or we should get answers, definitive answers to those things before we do any approval.
You've set a very high bar, smarter than you. We might have to do this in a different meeting.
I just have one question, so definitely not smarter than you, Commissioner Golis, but Mr. Lambert, if you could flip back to the stormwater management system in the parking lot, and right away? So I guess two questions. If you had to go with the one in the building with the pumps, did you have an emergency energy, power source?
Yes, that would be the intent, that you'd have emergency power for that pump system.
And then if, for the Board of Commissioners, the fact that it is in a township street right-of-way, we could have some agreement with the developer that he owns, operates, and maintains, we're just allowing him to occupy the space.
That is our understanding, yes.
Okay. That is all, that is all I had. I'll turn it over to Mr. Phillips, who has many other items here on stormwater for you.
Sorry, Mr. Golis, you had a couple other questions in there?
Oh, it was just, you know, we have, there's options of stormwater management, and there's, there's some, it seems like you're reacting in your review that is one better than the other in terms of protecting the foundation of the building. That was your notes. And also, you know, I just had, the pavement restoration, the trash pickup, these are just things that weren't like...
Yeah, the pavement restoration specifically was just a typo on the plans, I believe. It was...
Yeah, it was a detail.
Yeah. Yeah, that's not a concern.
I think what would be good, Mr. Phillips, is if you outline your concerns that are yet unresolved.
Sure. The biggest one, I guess, is the stormwater system, and I don't know that that gets resolved here, because that takes a decision of the Board of Commissioners. I would prefer to see the one in the street, 'cause, you know, being an engineer, I like, water goes downhill, and I don't want to have to pump it back up in a storm, and, you know, gravity is always better, in my opinion. Other concerns, I really don't have. They're items that I believe that we can address and work through.
Any concerns from Gilmore?
Our biggest concerns were the highway occupancy permit and the ADA issues. I know, as discussed, there still needs to be a coordination meeting with PennDOT, and as well as the trash pickup was another concern, since that has not been detailed on the plans.
Right now, on the architectural plans, which they did not have, there's an internal trash room, which is, again, not uncommon in a building like this, that they have the internal trash room, and then that would get picked up from there.
Mr. Golis, are you satisfied?
We would also, sorry, we would also anticipate having a few dumpsters in the alley, similar to the existing condition. I don't know that the internal trash room is gonna be large enough to handle both the residential and the commercial trash.
Yeah, I mean, I'm reacting to like, sort of our behavior in the past few meetings where we see, we see something in a bit incomplete, and do we, do we approve that, or do we want to see every I dotted and T crossed? Stephen, you're a stickler for this, so, you know, I'd like to know how you feel about it.
If I could differentiate this one from a lot of your cases, is that, this has the stormwater question, as Mr. Phillips pointed out, that we won't get answered until we get a vote from here. So, you know, if we came back again, you're gonna see the same plan again for stormwater, because we can't get that question answered.
I understand. And I also, if Steve's good with it, I'm good with it.
And in addition to that, the crosswalk, I don't believe can be rectified here either. That's a, at the end of the day, that's a PennDOT decision.
So what I'm hearing from staff is that it's not any better for them to come with crosswalk in hand, so to speak, from PennDOT. Okay. How, what do you...
I have one question about parking on Luella, the existing parking spots on Luella. Do they remain, or do they...
So we're showing, what is it, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight parking spaces to remain.
Compared to how many are there now?
Right now, it's a little bit tough. I think there was nine. I think we might lose one, and it was to...
And that's for access to the garage?
It was really to enhance the pedestrian access. Right now, if you look at the pedestrian, and that's not a good, that's the only one we have. It's not showing up. Oh, there, it's actually better on your screen. Right now, we're trying to provide an island kind of at the end here, so you can cross onto the existing sidewalk. Right now, you can come up and you cross at this angle, and so we're trying to put that island in there to be able to have a direct crosswalk. So it's really trying to help the pedestrians, and then I think, yeah, so he just pointed out, there are eight spaces, and we're keeping eight, but that is the, kind of the bigger area right there that we're showing.
Yeah, Mike Allen, I'm sure everyone's parked in those spaces down that hill like that.
Yeah, you better, you better have a good emergency brake.
Exactly. This will be more leveled out, actually.
So this is a great plan, partly because the planning commission had its hand in it from the beginning. So job well done, obviously. I do want to be somewhat cautious in terms of granting or recommending preliminary final, as it is a very large parcel to be developed. What we don't know is, we don't know. I'd be much more comfortable granting preliminary approval rather than final. That's just me speaking from the heart. I'd like to hear what the other commissioners have to say.
I guess I have a question in terms of what do you think would get changed between now and when they would come back for final? Are you saying, I mean, 'cause the crosswalk, I don't see, I mean, that's PennDOT, that's not gonna, worst-case scenario, it stays the way it is, 'cause PennDOT says no, I think. And I don't think that affects the building itself. The only other thing is what the board wants, the, or Commissioners want to do with the stormwater, and I tend to think they're gonna follow the engineers' recommendations there, so I'm not sure what, what, I'm just not following that logic in terms of what you think might still come up, or what we might need to still, I'm just trying to get a little bear of clarity in your thought process there.
Yeah, so it's, I can't say that I'm grounded in real facts and reasonable facts, and I don't think that's the burden that we have at the planning commission. Part of the advantage of being here is that you can speak from the heart, but it's, it's a large development, and I don't know what would make me more comfortable. I would rather be a little bit more sequential and more cautious. That's just my preference, and maybe it's because I'm new to this, right? But as far as, you know, maybe having a shorter review letter, or maybe some finalization on parking dimensions, perhaps crosswalk, I would just rather move step by step on something this large.
I, you know, I was, I was feeling like I needed, I needed, I wanted closure on those five things I brought up, and I, and I, what I'm hearing, what I'm hearing is commissioners telling me it's okay to give both approvals. I'm hearing staff tell me it's okay to give both approvals. No, Steve?
Didn't say one way or the other, sir.
But you're looking like negatively ported.
No, so just, and I, and I think what the developer's proposing here is, I agree with Commissioner Fruman, is beautiful. If you go preliminary, they can get their direction from the Board of Commissioners on the second meeting, right? You go preliminary caucus, then you go back. Whatever way the board wants to do on the stormwater, they can tell you there. You wrap all that up, you get, you see, you, you dimension the parking, maybe by then, you have your PennDOT, and it's a very, your PennDOT HOP approval. I know Leslie had mentioned the meeting with them, and then it's a quick turnaround for final. That's just one option to have.
Why don't we get a temperature of the board? Take a vote? So I'm gonna move to recommend preliminary approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against Varanhorst Vines Brewbaker. Okay. Motion passes. Good luck, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, under old business, uh, we have one item, which is the Garrett Hill Conestoga Road Outdoor Dining Ordinance. Uh, so a little bit of context here. Um, at our last meeting on August 7th, uh, this Planning Commission worked diligently, I'd like to say in the words of Commissioner Kim, uh, to strike a balance between the needs of the residents and the vitality of the business district. And in fact, by split vote of five to two, um, we recommended to the Board of Commissioners that the ordinance be approved, but with eight conditions. Um, and the Board of Commissioners, they met on August 21st, considered our conditions, and after hearing from the public, and it was an interesting meeting, if you watched it or attended it, um, we were able to get comment both for and against the ordinance. Um, so the Board of Commissioners, um, listened to that, they removed some of our conditions and imposed other new ones. Um, so they're now submitting the ordinance, um, as a new version 2023-06, uh, for our additional review and our recommendation again. So, I want to just go over the eight, uh, the conditions that they kept, uh, from the eight we recommended. So they kept, uh, the limits, uh, of outdoor dining to begin at 8:00 AM and end at 9:30 PM. They also clarified when outdoor dining would be permitted. So, uh, they incorporated March 1st through November 30th as the dates when outdoor dining could be in effect. Um, and all seating of patrons, uh, would be, uh, would end, uh, once the dining area would be closed. Uh, all we asked for was last seating at 8:00, done at 9:00, 8:00 PM, done at 9:30 PM. So they, they kept that and clarified it some more. Uh, the second, um, condition that they kept is, uh, we asked to develop a ratio of indoor seating to outdoor seating with a maximum of outdoor seating established by ordinance. And, uh, they clarified that. They said that outdoor seating would be limited to a maximum of 40% of the total number of permitted existing indoor seats. Um, the third item, um, we asked for the, uh, once the kitchen would close, the outdoor dining would close, uh, and they adopted that in its entirety. Um, fourth condition, we asked for a buffer between, uh, outdoor dining and, uh, the residential lots. Um, and the Board of Commissioners clarified that by providing for a 10-foot wide planted buffer. Uh, and this would exist between the outdoor dining and the property line of all adjacent properties, not just residential. So, uh, it was a significant enhancement. Uh, we asked for no smoking outside. And, um, we'll, we'll get some comment on that, but, uh, the Board of Commissioners, uh, clarified that by limiting smoking or vaping, um, to a designated portion of the outdoor dining area, um, presumptively, uh, a smoking area. In terms of alcohol, uh, being served outside, uh, the Board of Commissioners also as a sixth condition, clarified that, uh, alcohol could be served outside, but the sale of alcoholic beverages would be incidental to the, uh, serving of food. Um, so those are the six conditions that they adopted. There's two conditions that we requested, but we did not get. Uh, we requested no loitering during or after outdoor seating hours. So, uh, the idea was that, uh, if you were seated in the outdoor space, you would be served. Um, the Board of Commissioners declined to adopt that, uh, and that outdoor dining permit renewal would take into account nuisance complaints against the business before granting the, uh, the outdoor dining permit, uh, upon renewal. And finally, uh, the Board of Commissioners added three clarifying conditions. So, uh, they clarified that no additional parking spaces are required for outdoor dining in the GHCR district, and, um, that, uh, each outdoor seat created in the district by a food establishment would reduce, uh, one-for-one, uh, existing indoor seats for that food establishment, uh, while the outdoor dining is open for the season. Um, and then lastly, um, they did clarify that owners, operators, including agents and employees, and customers of the dining establishment shall comply with the township's noise ordinance and nuisance provisions. So, uh, this is what, uh, in summary, ordinance 2023-06 looks like. Um, also, uh, in addition to the new ordinance 2023-06, we received four letters from the following residents, and please forgive me if you're watching, I may butcher your name, with Kathy Kakas, Andrew Smith, Tony Bailey, Rick and Patty Barker, and Norma De Crema, who were unanimous in, uh, asking us to not approve, not recommend approval of this ordinance. Uh, so, um, and these letters largely address four items that I've outlined in the prior meeting. Number one, potential noise and light pollution due to outdoor dining, impact on street parking, potentially increased vermin and pests, uh, and the general unfairness of reduced setback requirements in Garrett Hill, uh, as opposed to other Radnor districts. So, in my view, um, our commission, I think we did a fairly good job looking at the original ordinance 2023-03 through the lens of health, safety, and welfare of Garrett Hill, um, while also protecting the interests of the small, but hopefully, uh, thriving and thriving in perpetuity business district. And, um, I do believe that the ordinance 2023-06 does incorporate the vast majority of our recommendations that we stipulated, and also adds additional barriers, um, while allowing for the concept of outdoor dining on an extremely limited and controlled basis. So, that being said, the commissioners, uh, you've all read the new ordinance. Um, I'd like to hear from y'all. Um, then we'll have some public comment. Hopefully, we'll then take, take a vote. I don't know if it's appropriate to go down the line as we did last time, but, uh, I'd like to hear from you. No comments?
Oh, no, I thought we were going down the line.
No, we're not.
Okay. Uh, yeah, so I, I, I voted no at our last meeting. Uh, I'm going to vote no. Sorry about that. I voted no at our last meeting. I'm going to vote no this tonight. Uh, three, three reasons, some of which you've heard. Uh, at the Highland Park Unity Day, I ran into folks from, uh, FHI Studio, the new folks doing the comprehensive planning. Uh, they're very excited about doing the comprehensive planning in Radnor, and they certainly hope that we wouldn't start, uh, create spot zoning while they're coming in to do a comprehensive plan. So, uh, just out of respect for them, I'm voting no. Second, it is spot zoning, no matter what Sean says. Uh, and set, the setback issue is important, and the Delaware County Planning Commission had huge problems with it. So, out of respect to them, I'm going to vote no. So that's how I feel. That's it.
I just said, um, I still have four, at least four issues with this.
Hi, can you speak in?
Sure. The first one is, uh, I don't agree with the smoking, uh, provision. I said I don't agree with the smoking provision that the Board of Commissioners has, uh, inserted. I would recommend that there be no smoking. With the 50-foot, uh, setback, as I understand, it's referencing single-family dwelling. I would say single-family or multifamily. I don't see any difference of why you would, you know, not have a setback if it's a multifamily. Uh, third, I would reinsert the renewal, uh, provision that we had so that it would consider any kind of nuisance problems in the prior year. And I would also reinsert the loitering, uh, so that it doesn't become a de facto, you know, post 9:30 gathering.
Let's address, uh, some of the items that were rejected, and I think this will require some solicitor input. Uh, with respect to, uh, prohibition on smoking and with outdoor dining, um, can you comment on that?
Uh, from my understanding, I believe that was due to, uh, enforceability, uh, the difficulty in enforcing that. I understand that by designating a certain portion for smoking, you run into the same in, enforceability problem, but this way at least we're, uh, setting sort of the rules of the game for these establishments, and they can designate specific areas and, uh, have those established to ensure that, that, uh, that they're not violating that. And obviously, I think from, from their perspective, given the way that society has certainly shifted over the last several decades in terms of smoking, they, it would be beneficial to them to, um, make sure that, that they're compliant with that. But I think it ultimately came down to an enforceability issue.
Uh, well, I, I would have to object because we certainly don't have an issue enforcing smoking regulations inside an establishment. Could you, could you clarify why one would be different than the other?
I'm not a, I just know that, that this was from, uh, John Rice, who's the solicitor of the Board of Commissioners, that, that, that sort of was the issue that was raised, was enforceability, so.
Is it potentially that we may be conflicting with state law here versus local law?
No, not from my understanding.
Okay, I understand. Uh, we, we can still recommend.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, could I just make one comment?
Yeah, of course.
Or two comments on that. One, it's exactly right what you just said, enforceability. There's no distinction. There's no distinction between the enforceability for indoor or outdoor, or if you have outdoor from a no smoking versus you can smoke here. What I view this as is more of a residential issue, that you don't want all of the smoking wafting into adjoining properties.
Uh, I, I certainly don't object. Um, so, uh, with respect to the 50-foot setback, uh, we, we can certainly add those back in. Um, uh, with respect to the 50-foot setback to, uh, what was your comment to...
So, the way it's written, as I see it, it said 50 feet within a single-family dwelling.
Mm-hmm.
And I think it should, you know, be as broadly encompassed, say, single-family dwelling or multifamily dwelling. I would even add a third one if there is such a thing. But the idea is residential.
Mm-hmm.
In whatever form it is.
Solicitor, what's your thought on this?
I, I think that's a valid recommendation, that we can just sort of have it just residential properties in general, rather than singling out just single-family homes.
Okay, got it. And, um, in terms of, uh, the renewal provisions, uh, to consider the track record of the business and, uh, granting renewal. So the recom, the theory here is that there would be a permit granted to a business, that permit would expire, have an expiration date, and then, uh, there would be a renewal period during which the track record of the business would be considered as to perhaps nuisance and other, other things that the neighborhood would find unsavory. What are your thoughts with respect to that?
I, I think that's something that you can recommend again, uh, back to the board. Um, I think that gets tough in terms of looking at what's, what sort of metrics we're looking at. I'm, I'm assuming maybe identifying, would it be police calls, um, calls for, I guess, emergency services, calls for, uh, noise violations. I think identifying that would be helpful to them. Um, and I, it, it, it just, it, it could be a bit wonky as to how that plays out.
What are your thoughts with respect to conditional use, rather than a permit?
Well, I don't, I don't think that would be necessary in this case because obviously the use is identified, that they're having an establishment, uh, there. Um, and obviously certain restrictions can be placed on permits. I don't, I don't know if they've sort of looked at that. Um, but again, I mean, the, the, the regulations are what, what are identified that they would have to be complied with. So, it's, uh, but certainly recommending certain conditions be placed on, uh, the issuance of a permit could be a viable recommendation.
And is your opinion that we could just leave it there and just, uh, ask for the board to consider a set of conditions for renewal? Or do we have to stipulate?
I think it's best to stipulate, just so you're clear to the board exactly what you're asking for.
Okay, very good. Anybody else?
I was very much in favor of the ordinance before. And however, having the opportunity to drive further around the area, um, over the past couple weeks, and thinking about it, and thinking about the number of existing tables that are out there right now, and listening to Commissioner Farhi saying, hey, if we don't have these outside dining, some of these establishments may not be around or may not exist. I'm also reading, also with what the Board of Commissioners have recommended, and I disagree vehemently about the smoking. And also just thinking through with what may or may not happen within the state of Pennsylvania. But, you know, I do know, having lived up in New York City and just been listening, I watch a lot of, of the US Open, and there's a lot of complaints about smoking marijuana or smoking dope. And so what happens now if Pennsylvania legalizes or decriminalizes marijuana? And so you're going to have people smoking in the parking lot or whatever, and you're 10 feet, 20 feet away from someone's home. And I just know that a lot of the players and, um, a lot of the, the patrons of the US Open, they were vehemently discussing, or basically, uh, what am I, they were, um, complaining about the, the amount of marijuana smoke. And so I'm very sensitive to the homes, they were like right by Flippin' Bailey's or some of the other patrons, um, and restaurants. I'm also concerned about the number of, of tables outside. So before, we had a limitation. Now they're saying it's 40% of the tables within side. And so, going back to some of these park, the size of the parking lots, is there a requirement now that the parking lot has to still maintain of a certain size? You still need a number of parking spaces? Because the way I read it right now is that you could have, the 40% of the tables could overflow into the parking lot, so they could still take up some of the existing parking spaces, right?
Uh, so the restaurant would still need to meet the parking regulations as they exist. If they're non-conforming for parking today...
Okay.
They can't recapture their, their existing parking spaces. So the 40% is the upper limit.
Correct.
It's actually a limiting factor on outdoor dining rather than...
I, I think, I think 40% is just, I think it's a lot. So, the, those are my issues.
One, one other point, just, just so there's not any confusion, and I know the Chair outlined this in the... this in the beginning, was that it's not adding any additional seats to the overall establishment. So if you're having one, if you're placing one seat outside, you have to take away one seat from the inside.
Okay, that wasn't clear here, okay.
Yeah, I think that's?
Yeah, that's still there. Yeah, there's no increase in overall dining seats, just an upper limit on outdoor seating.
Such that if you had 40%, you would basically be halfway emptying your dining, inside dining area to do that?
Yeah. Correct.
Well, to your point, Lane, I would say, the way I interpret this, a restaurant may be, by code, maybe, may have 200 indoor seats, but they may today only have 120. So they have 80 additional seats by code that they could then move outside and still maintain that 40-60 relationship, but they still can't add anymore, well, they can't add more seats than they're permitted to have, not more seats than, like, in other words?
On your 200, what you're saying?
Right. If the fire marshal or whoever came in and said, this restaurant is good for 200 seats, but I only use 120 of them?
Yep.
I could put 80 seats outdoors and not touch my inside.
Correct.
And, oh, it's good.
Actually, I don't think that, it said existing, so you can't, you can't do that.
Well, there's a permissible, there's a permissible amount.
No, that's not existing, though. Existing is existing.
Well, existing changes every night. Some nights, they flip some four tops, some nights, they, like, exist.
Well, you have a layout.
I think it's existing by, that's allowed by code, or their maximum capacity.
Which may not be what they're actually utilizing.
Sure.
Just looking, just looking at the way it's written in subsection two, that is a little confusing. Do they mean permitted and existing? And if they don't, then maybe you just take out the word existing.
Permitted.
I mean, I believe the fire marshal comes in and says, you can have 250 people in this building. That's your maximum occupancy, and they post it on the wall.
Solicitor.
There's a big plaque that says 250 people. And then somebody may come in and say, this is how many seats you can have.
Chair, for a minute, I, with all due respect, I question the procedure of this. Why are we, why are we being asked to debate township ordinance? We did that already. We made a recommendation. Now they want to make more changes to it.
Sure. So the process of this is that we send our recommendation back. The resulting ordinance is so different from 2023-03 that they're required to send it back to us, as well as the Delaware County Planning Commission, for additional review. So they've incorporated six of our eight points, they've rejected two of them, and they've added three clarifiers, which is more than a de minimis change, which requires our additional review at this point. And so we get to consider this newly. Does that make sense?
It does, but, you know, we are here looking out for the greater good, and it's a volunteer board. They're elected. I'm assuming they have their finger on the pulse of their constituents. So I just, I wonder why, like, I feel like the role has been flipped.
So the public gets to speak in our meetings, and we'll get to you in a few minutes.
Yeah.
But they also get to speak on the ordinance. Now, the process of an ordinance becoming an ordinance, a township ordinance, is that it has to be introduced. Once the introduction happens, there's some debate, but it's a two-step process. It doesn't get introduced and get voted into at one meeting. It's, it gets introduced, then it gets sent to us, the Delaware County Planning Commission, then, based on whether it, we're going to make a recommendation. Then it goes back to the Board of Commissioners, and then they vote.
Oh, we, I'm sorry.
They voted to introduce it. They did not vote to pass it.
So I'm now starting to lean more towards Commissioner Golis and his comments about, you know, having a bigger vision and allowing the values of the community to speak, to guide ordinances like this, legislative issues like this. I, maybe I was mistaken by saying that this is a balance between quality of life and, you know, economic vitality, but perhaps what I'm hearing really is that this is a balance or a decision of who we are as, are we a family-friendly town or are we a college town? And I'm not sure we get to decide that. I mean, we are citizens and residents as well, but maybe there is a larger comp planning process that needs to define those values and that identity for us. And that, let that identity and those values guide decisions like this. I also, I mean, if this window is from March to November, it's closing very quickly, right? And it's not going to open again until March, so we have some time, don't we?
The point, so you made some good points. Number one, I don't think this is the venue to sample public opinion as a Board of Commissioners would. Of course, we're going to hear from the public. I would imagine that they'll have an opportunity to opine, but our lens is different. Our lens is different. Our lens is the health, safety, welfare, and sometimes also compromise, and to your previous point, to preserve business vitality here. So through that lens is how I'm examining it. Now, of course, the Board of Commissioners have a different decision to make, is that they do get more of the township sample, and I think at their meetings, the view was a lot more balanced. Certainly, there were people for and against, if you watch that meeting. And I do agree with you, I think, on a couple of items here in this particular ordinance with Mr. Vines and everybody else. I think the smoking provisions, the fact that they were removed, I think that was a mistake. I think the 50-foot setback to any sort of residential, even though there is no multifamily residential there today, makes sense as a safeguard. And also, I think there should be some sort of a renewal process that considers the track record. Now, the fact remains is that we've had this for three years. There have been very limited complaints by anybody with respect to any of the businesses that took advantage of this. And I think we have a unique opportunity to examine, not just as a board that just contemplates in thin air and pontificates from the dais about any sort of changes, but we can actually examine the record. What has actually happened? What bad things have happened in Garrett Hill due to outdoor dining during the past three years? And I think the record is very clear, that there has not been a lot of complaints. And I think, I think we need to hear from the public more. And I also don't know if this is the right venue to do that. But my sense is that the original recommendations that we make, and we can do the same thing today, we can add on the three provisions that we found were missing, and send them back to the Board of Commissioners and have, let them have their way with it. Any other Commissioner comments? Let's hear from the public.
My name is Dee Delaney. I live at 229 Williams Road. And first of all, I just really appreciate your concern, your insight, your perspective, because this is really important to us as a community. And I still don't understand why Radnor Township has hired someone to do a master plan. This is a complex situation and with a lot of different competing interests. And I think that rather than burdening the Planning Commission or the Board of Commissioners, this should be really considered and brought before the new master plan company, and let them hear and vet with everybody before arriving at a decision now. I have my petition that I submitted to the Board of Commissioners during their last meeting, and it's as pertinent to the 2023-03 ordinance as it is to the 2023-06 ordinance. So I think you can see from the number of signatures that our dedicated group of volunteers who went out into the community and talked to folks to listen to their concerns, there are a number of people that really do not agree with this ordinance or the 06 ordinance. We have a total of 134 signatures, and if we kept going, we would have had more. Now, out of that 134, I would consider 89 to be people that would be most affected. There were other people in the broader community that are against this as well. But we petitioned on Williams Road, on Whitworth Lane, Summit Terrace, Garrett Avenue, Calanan, Conestoga Bailey, Meredith, Echus, and Meredith. All of these properties, all of these homes are in very close proximity to the Garrett Hill-Conestoga Road Business District. Currently, we have three bar restaurants in our neighborhood. This ordinance, 03-06, gives all the other business establishments beyond those three restaurants the ability to have outdoor dining. Garrett Hill is one of the most densest and most diverse communities in Radnor Township. You know the history of it. The Main Line was built by the people that lived in Garrett Hill, and those people were considerate enough to make sure that those people had homes to go to with good quality of life. And they built the, they built the Main Line and they maintained it, and we're still doing that today. So the least I would expect from anybody making decisions on this is that they give the current essential workers in our community the same respect as the original planners of the, of the, of the Main Line in the, in the turn of the century. This is no small matter. We have multi-generational families living in our community, people that have had their grandparents live there. We have, and then a lot of times, the kids that grow up there, they move away, and then they come back to raise their own families. Just between, on Williams Road, between Flippin' Bailey's and Andy's Automotive, you just go down to Fitzwilliam, that's a couple hundred feet, maybe 300 feet at tops, we have a measuring tape that we're going to go out and measure these things, so you can know specifically exactly how much space is involved in that. There are 10 families in that 200, 300-feet range. There are 20 kids in those families. And just as you were talking about, like, the wafting of cigarette smoke or marijuana or anything like that, or noises, they're going to be directly impacted, and these are families. I always thought that Radnor Township supported families, and they want to have a healthy place for kids to grow up. So beyond, like, the permitting thing, I can also talk to other matters, as far as, like, the parking. The parking and this whole idea of this parking swap? When this was first talked about in the May 22, Board of Commissioners meeting, spontaneously, there were Radnor Township officials starting to talk to each other, and I wasn't in a position to know if it was, who it was, if it was Mr. Norsini or who it was over here, but they started talking about the White Dog Cafe. And they had a parking swap thing going on there to get, you know, whatever permit they needed or whatever, but they had a lot of problems enforcing it. And you can go back and see the video and listen to them and discuss it. And then finally, I don't know if it was Mr. Norsini or somebody, said, oh, well, we just hired a fire marshal. He'll take care of that. How are they going to take care of that? If you look at Flippin' Bailey's, they have a second floor, and I don't think it's been used much lately, because I think a lot of the Villanova kids, especially during the summer, you know, things sort of, it's like a little bit of a ghost town, but it's because the kids aren't there, the residents aren't there. But once school starts again, then it completely changes. Flippin' Bailey's has, in the past, had Quiznos nights and packed in the second floor. They also have two rooms on the first floor. So they have, like, the bar restaurant on the one side, and then, and then the other, I guess it's a bar restaurant, too. I know when it was the Wild Onion, it was a restaurant, and you could just go in and have a nice quiet meal. This idea of having this swap parking thing, you're going to send a fire marshal in every day to count seats inside and outside to make sure that, you know, that the parking, there's enough parking available to the people that are coming? Anyway, and, you know, the setbacks, there's so many things that I could talk about, and I don't want to just, like, hog up everything, but the noise disturbances, you know, and the time of closing. So the noise, the closing time with the Radnor Township, the existing Radnor Township ordinance is, like, from 8:00 in the morning until 10:00 at night, anybody that has outdoor dining. And on top of which, there's a bus stop right at the corner of Flippin' Bailey's, and it gets really crazy there for the kids. But the only thing that you've done is move back the closing time for the outdoor dining 30 minutes to 9:30. I talked to people today with kids, young kids, and I asked them, what time do your kids, are you putting your kids to bed? And they said 7:00 o'clock for the youngest ones. They've got, there's, we've got two newborns, and then there's toddlers, and then there's kids maybe up until elementary school age. And they put their kids to bed at 7:00, the youngest ones, and the other ones probably about 8:00 o'clock. Once, once, if you have dinner finished at 8:00 o'clock, you're still going to have cleanup and everything like that. But these are the people that are living, these are the families, the young families that are living the closest to Flippin' Bailey's, as an example. All the, this, this ordinance, 2023-03 and the 06 one, they give any new development carte blanche, the right to have outdoor dining. So that includes Norsini's property, that includes, like, the strip with the Conestoga Pizza and the dry cleaners and the laundromat, which is owned by Nudie's. And it also includes Andy's Automotive. And then there's a, there's a larger property that sits back along and behind Antonella's little Italian place, where, you know, you can get sandwiches and stuff, the insurance office, and the, what used to be the Trophy Store. There's, there's a bigger property that sits behind that that has apartments and stuff in it. That whole area actually, or at least part of it, sold recently. And all of that could be developed. All of, all of these places can have outdoor dining on top of the three establishments that we have right now. So this is a big issue for us. We can easily, with the university We can easily, with the universities and colleges and other people that want to do special events, be completely overrun where it's not even our neighborhood anymore. So it is important, and I think that it deserves to be heard by a nonpartisan group, like, you know, the master plan folks, and so that they can get a fresh perspective on what our community is and, you know, the impacts of things like this massive outdoor dining. So I'll yield to anybody else that wants to give their...
Thank you, Ms. Delaney. I do want to clarify for both the commissioners and the audience at large as to what the master plan consultants do and don't do. So there's no ordinance that is going to come out of the master plan. What the master plan does, and I'm fortunate to be a representative to the Steering Committee of that plan, is that it actually takes the pulse of the community, and that drives recommendations to the town of how to proceed. And there's several statutory things that are being considered, so there are no ordinances that are going to come out of it. The consultants are not in the business of making recommendations. The people that are making recommendations are you through a survey process as well as public participation.
Well, the one thing that I would like to come back with you about is that I, you know, listened to your saying that the Board of Commissioners has the pulse of the public. Well, we have a commissioner that does not represent us. And I want to, and it's interesting, because, like, the Delaware County recommendations, I feel like they recommend us more than our own commissioner recommends us. And I would like to read for the record, anybody that's, you know, watching this, what the recommendations were from Delaware County.
We're aware of what they are.
I know that you are, but it's like the general public doesn't know, so I'll just read a couple, if I may. They talk about the permit, having a permit renewal process, as you've been discussing, related to nuisance issues, and the outdoor dining setbacks. This is the big thing. Commissioner Farhi has been talking, 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 talking about the fair, you know, equal playing field, equal playing field. He wants Garrett Hill businesses to compete with King of Prussia, Devon Yards, Ardmore, Delaware County, for the first time during this whole process, has said, "Outdoor dining setbacks. Setback provisions within the zoning code should be consistent and equitable for all township residents." No one has said this. Our commissioner doesn't say that. All he says is, "Oh, yeah, everybody wants it, fair and equal playing field for the businesses." He's never recommended, he's never represented us on this issue. So it's, I think, folly to say that for our situation, our commissioner does not represent us, and that's why we're making appeals to whoever we can to represent us. So thank you, and Godspeed.
Thank you, Ms. Delaney. All right.
Can I make a comment? I have felt from the beginning that this has never been presented to this group as Planning Commission in the form that anyone else comes before us and presents. They come in with a site plan, they show us the limits of what they're talking about, they give us a capacity of the building. They, none of that's ever been done for us, and I'm listening to things that, really, I don't, it's hard for me to put into context, into that area. And so I would like to respect everyone's opinion in this, but it's a little hard without understanding just what the limits of this area is. And so in terms of planning, I wouldn't recommend it, because I can't see it. I tend to be fairly graphic in that way, but we should be. That's why we're here, on a Planning Commission. I'm not here to talk about hours of operation and such. It's a little difficult for me to have an opinion on that.
But further to your point, Stephen, we spent, I don't know how long, how many hours debating this, going back and forth, where we put together constructive, well-thought-out recommendations. They, I'm not, I did not attend the meeting from the Board of Commissioners, but they rejected it, and then why are they kicking it back to us? We did our job. And so going back, it's like, I'm listening more and more, and as well as, I really have a complete change of opinion over this thing. And I really, you know, I want to hear more from the public opinion, but my views completely changed 100% here, where, you know, I just, I completely disagree with not only the process and why we're being burdened with this, and going back to operations and smoking or non-smoking or whatever, this is not planning. But if it is, I completely say that the whole, the process is not correct, as well as even the substance, going back to your point, Matt, I do believe this is spot planning, and I believe that now further, that the folks that live in Garrett Hill, why doesn't the same policy exist for the folks that live in Wayne, or the folks that live in Newtown Square, or elsewhere, any other commercial areas?
Well, we're here to consider just Radnor, right? But I think to your point...
But it is Radnor.
To your point, is a 500-foot setback appropriate?
Well, I think what's really daunting to me, in having gone to Harsh P Jerkies and the Onion and Flippin' Bailey's and everything else, and I've been to Wednesday nights, when schools and, when Villanova's in session, yes, that upper level is packed with students. And so going back to the number of tables, as I ran, when I was affiliated with the Radnor Soccer Club, we had dining upstairs. So that means, how many tables does that exist up there versus the tables on the other side of the bar, versus the, you know, how many people sit at the bar itself? So if you take 40% of those tables and you put them outside, that's a lot of, that's a lot of patrons. So I just don't think, I, I'm actually, more and more I think about it, and the more and more I object to the fact is that the Board of Commissioners rejected our recommendations, and they punted it back to us, and now with what they suggested, to me, it makes complete no sense whatsoever.
So, two things. Number one, Commissioner Nat, do you agree that a business has a fundamental right to operate at the maximum capacity that it's allowed by law, within the confines of the business?
I think a couple things. One is that Commissioner Farhi, where he came in and he basically said in his opinion, if dining, outside dining does not happen, these businesses will not survive. I completely disagree with that. However, I'm all for outdoor dining. I love outdoor dining. But I just think the way it's represented where, I'm not sure if we're being hoodwinked or whatever, but, and I just don't like the process. And going back to what you're saying, within the way the law is, I think what, I think, for me to interpret how the law is right now goes back to Commissioner Golds', is your point about spot zoning. Why, if you're asking my judgment, why is it the folks at Garrett Hill are basically, why is it not fair for there for the setbacks versus other areas of Radnor Township? Why don't we have one clear ordinance across the, or, excuse me, restrictions across the entire township? Why? But that's not up to me.
Can, Solicitor, can we get a definition on spot zoning?
Yeah, so, and if I could go back and clarify as to why this is back before you tonight, is because, as required under the MPC, any zoning ordinance that is proposed by the Board of Commissioners has to be reviewed by the Planning Commission. Based upon your earlier review, it was sent back, they took into account some of your recommendations, and then based on those changes, there was a significant amount of changes that were made. That's why it's back here. So it's not necessarily, I guess, punting the decision to anybody else.
But we're going, this is what, the second iteration? So what is it, so we're open to several more future iterations before someone really takes full responsibility and basically applies on this and passes this one way or the other?
Well, based on whatever happens here tonight, the board, it'll go back to them, and they can say, "We're going to make the changes in regard to single-family or multifamily," and then be sent back to you, or they could say, "We're not going to, we like the way the ordinance is written, and we're going to pass it as is," or they could vote to, obviously, deny the ordinance. Now, in terms of spot zoning and why, there's, we have different zoning districts for reasons, right? We have different uses in various different zoning districts. Some highlight retail spaces, commercial uses, or residential uses. So this isn't a case of spot zoning because it's applying to this specific zoning district, not singling out a singular property for economic benefit. So, and that's sort of the rationale as to why we're having a different setback requirement than is what's required elsewhere in the township.
Let's hear from the public. Please come up.
Hello, gentlemen. I'm going to try to make this as short, as short as I can. I'm Lauren Wigand, I live at 229 Williams Road. That's about half a block away from the restaurants up on Conestoga. This proposed ordinance has become a monster. That's the best way that I can put it. It's back and forth, up and down, and I just wanted to address one thing that Mr. Fruman said about the no complaints for the restaurants. There were no complaints over a three-year period because we all wanted the restaurants to survive during COVID. So, and they really didn't have a whole lot of people that came anyway, so there wasn't a lot of noise, and we wanted the restaurants to survive. People weren't going inside, so that's one of the reasons that there were no complaints. We currently have, I don't know what it's called, a code or whatever, in our existing code, that if a restaurant wants to have a variance, they have an opportunity to ask for, the Board of Commissioners ask for a variance. So this whole ordinance, I don't even know why we're talking about this. The rest, we want, we want outdoor dining, but we don't want a carte blanche ordinance that gives the restaurants all of this, I don't know what you call it, I don't want to call it freedoms, because it's not really freedoms, that they have an opportunity to go to the Board of Commissioners and ask for a variance. And there's an opportunity for the residents to go to the, go to that meeting, go to that hearing, and give their opinion about it. I have no problem with some of the restaurants having outdoor dining. I like outdoor dining, as you can tell. I like any dining. So, anyway, I would like to propose that. I like drinking, too, but not to excess. I would like to, I don't know if I can make a proposal to you or to ask you if someone on this Planning Commission can make a proposal, that we just keep the ordinance, the current ordinance as it is. This gives the restaurants the ability to ask for a variance, and, you know, I don't know what the exact words are, I have it written down here somewhere, but this whole thing, it's like so upsetting, and, you know, we have kids in the neighborhood, and so what I'm trying to say is that there's provisions for conditional use and zoning waivers, and why can't we just keep that? Instead of going through this monstrosity of an ordinance that's back and forth, up and down to the Board of Commissioners, so please, can somebody just propose that? That, you know, you just keep the ordinance as it is, and that if a restaurant wants a variance, that they go to the Board of Commissioners. Why do we have to go through all this? This is like craziness.
So that would be a vote no?
That would be what?
For the ordinance proposal?
Yes, I am against the ordinance proposal, but I am not against outdoor dining. But I would like to keep the ordinance as it is, the current ordinance, not these new They have an avenue now to get what they want, and there's a way for Radnor Township to monitor these restaurants. These new proposals, there's no way to enforce any of this. Are you going to have the residents take the onus of being up there and keeping an eye on that? And, you know, like some of the commissioners had said, have said, there could be a possibility of 200 people up there in an outdoor dining area. There are people in driveways that play, not pickleball, cornhole, two driveways away from me, and I don't care that they do that, they're having fun, but I can hear every bang of the pickleball, of the cornhole beanbag thing going into the hole. What's it going to be like if there's a possibility of having all of these tables up at the corner? It's going to be crazy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Toni Bailey-Meda, and I live in Garrett Hill. First, I would like to address something. Garrett Hill is a community, a community with businesses. It is not Wayne, it is not King of Prussia, it is a community with businesses. Wayne is a bona fide business district. Garrett Hill has never wavered on that, it's never been changed. There's another issue, too, and thank you all if you have read my detailed email. One of the things I addressed in there was young lungs. So the proposed ordinance, 03 and 06, would allow smoking, vaping outdoors, less than, what, 100 feet? We have a park where we have no smoking, young lungs, so the hypocrisy to me is palpable. So I wish you all would consider that, too. So now we'll get down to the nitty-gritty. I am against outdoor dining as proposed in ordinance 2023-3 and -3, as it's being presented. Garrett Hill is already the densest neighborhood in Radnor Township. A lot of deference has been given to the bar, restaurant owner, investors. And by the way, we spoke about business vitality. It is my understanding by several of the business owners, they are doing great. Before COVID, most of them just had indoor dining, you know, or takeout, and then their takeout business really, you know, thrived. So they are all doing well in terms of business vitality. What about the residents of Garrett Hill who work hard to pay rent or have chosen to invest in a home? What about them? Let's be honest, no one would want this type of outdoor dining in their backyard. Wayne is a bona fide business district, gets 100 to 500-feet setbacks. Garrett Hill gets zero to 50. The 50, as I recall, has to do with single-family dwellings. Twins get zero setbacks. So I think these are all things, and lastly, before I give my final, there are those who have suggested that the residents of Garrett Hill and surround... that the residents of Garrett Hill and surrounding areas belong to the blue-collar contingent of Radnor residents. And to correct this shortcoming in the township, the entire area requires gentrification. Nothing could be further from the truth for many reasons that should be obvious to any rational person. This part of Radnor Township is home to a diverse cross-section of individuals from various educational, ethnic, financial, cultural backgrounds who have chosen to live here and to become an integral part of the community. This has contributed to our success as a community, not as a disadvantage. I say no to this. Garrett Hill deserves a whole lot better. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. Just, Solicitor, just for clarification, twins. How are we defining twins with the context of this ordinance?
I'm going to have to look at the, I'll take a look at the zoning ordinance and see. But I would imagine that would be classified as a single-family dwelling as well, not, not, that, not that that's not included as a buffer there.
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, we had spoken previously about all residential and not limiting it because I totally agree, no reason to limit it to single families.
It, it's in my notes. Thank you, Mr. Vines. Yes, sir.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Good evening. My name is Samuel Horsey. I live at 52 Wentworth Lane in Garrett Hill. We moved there, my wife and I moved there in 1986. We've seen many, many, many changes. But we have adapted to those changes. I'm a retired military person of 28 years. Retired post office, 31 years. And now I'm retired and I'd just like to be comfortable, not to have a whole lot of aggravations, um, problems or anything like that. I've been sitting here listening, and I was just thinking. In a court of law, or when you go to court, you have a defendant and you have a prosecutor. Do you see anybody here who have an interest in the business in Garrett Hill present? And yet, you're defending them or trying to do something for them for which they're not here to represent themselves? I'm a little upset, but I'm trying to maintain it. How many of you have visited Garrett Hill in the evenings to see what's going on? But yet, you're going to make a decision. Pieces of paper don't show the big picture. Be accountable for yourselves. I try to live the good life. I try to, I go to Villanova University, and I try to be a good Christian. A lot of things have gone through my life, but I don't have malice on them. We have a parking problem in Garrett Hill. If you have outside dining, you're going to still have a parking problem. But you have to take all of this into consideration. On Conestoga Road, we have construction, and it's going to be another big problem. And we don't know how long the construction is going to last. I thank you for your time and for hearing me out. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public?
I had three operations within a year. That's why I have this.
We understand. So, I want to thank the public for voicing their concerns, both tonight in front of us. You've spent a lot of time with us today. It's a serious issue. We get it. Regardless of the outcome this evening, this does go back to the Board of Commissioners. And that's our elected officials, and that's where the real vote takes place. We can, we're going to take a vote tonight, and we're going to vote either to recommend approval or we're recommend, going to recommend denial. However, as before, the real answer lies with them. So, I, I do want to say that for those who are in the camp of being appalled, shall we say, at the fact that some of our recommendations were denied, I have to be in agreement. When it comes to smoking, personally, as a former smoker, I, I know that this is an insidious habit, and it disproportionately, more so than noise, impacts residents who have to put up with it. So, I will say that I'm surprised that that provision was stricken. And I do believe that, I have to disagree with this Solicitor, that I do believe that it's enforceable. I think we do a great job at it. Certainly with all dining establishments. And I do think that the Delaware County Department of Health could perhaps be another body that could be used to, for enforcement. I don't know how it's enforced, but there's lots of agencies that could play a part in that. So, I do believe that if we were to vote to approve this, that this would be an integral part of our recommendation tonight. I do take issue with the characterization that this is going to create carte blanche approval for every restaurant to create, uh, outdoor dining. There are many constraints in Garrett Hill. It is, to everybody's point, it's, the district is different. And we are not going to sit here and characterize this as different as in worse. We're going to understand that there are differences in terms of lot size, in terms of how people live and within what proximity to the business district. And, um, if this ordinance does become law, which again is Board of Commissioners' decision, it does not mean that every restaurant will have a chance to put up a table and chairs and start outdoor dining from 8:00 AM to 9:30 PM. There are many constraints in terms of parking. The ordinance then has also a requirement in terms of maximum seating. I think that was a, that was an improvement over the ordinance that we suggested. We actually made a recommendation that outdoor seating should be constrained by some amount, 40%. Sounds large, although I do not believe that it'll ever get there with the present restaurants and lot sizes. Just because so many of them are non-conforming in terms of, in terms of parking already. In Garrett Hill, unlike the WBOD, outdoor dining at this point has to be limited. It can't be on a sidewalk. Certainly on a public sidewalk. Public sidewalks aren't big enough. So, they have to use other private parking area. There's only two restaurants in the current configuration that could even contemplate, uh, outdoor dining under the current environment. That would be Conestoga Style Pizza and, um, the Ale House. Flippin' Bailey's does not qualify. They're non-conforming for parking. And I do think that ultimately, the intent of this ordinance was to remove the constraint of a restaurant to go through the arduous zoning hearing board process to get a variance, to get this passed. In the last three years, we've gone through an interesting period of time, to say the least. We've gone through a period of time where economic activity was constrained, and nobody was able to dine indoors to a period where the regulations were relaxed to, and now, it's as if the pandemic never happened. That being said, there is a desire by some businesses. They're not here to make that permanent. And I do believe that we've done a fairly good job putting in the constraints that protect the public. And it's unfortunate that some of them were not, were not, uh, given back to us to vote on tonight. So, I'm going to construct a motion to incorporate some of the things that we discussed tonight. And unless there's any additional comment by our Commissioners, I'd like to get a vote and put this matter to rest and send it back to the Board of Commissioners.
I just want to echo one thing you, you said. I think I lost sight of this, is the practicality of it, is that you're not going to see a flood of, you're not going to see 200 Villanova students on, on the street because it's outdoor dining and it's, there's not the space to put 200 people outside. So, there, there's a practical element to this. I do think that one is a little confusing because I read it as permitted existing, meaning both permitted and existing. So, you couldn't fudge it the way you were, you were concerned about. But even if you could, there's not the space to do it. And, and, and so I, I, I think that's something we have to keep in mind with this, too, that there is a natural constraint on this beyond just what, what the, what is said in there. And, and I think it, just unfortunate, the, the way the process has played out, that it came back to us because they did incorporate so much of our prior recommendations. So, they have to send it back to us.
I will say, you know, just to kick this back to you, Commissioner Brubaker, is that we can't sit here and legislate against a certain subgroup of diners or users. We have to assume that we trust our noise ordinances, we trust our nuisance prosecution process, and that, you know, whether it's 200 Villanova students or 200 folks my age or even older, that everybody's going to behave in, in an orderly fashion. That's the underlying sense of certainly my temperature of this. Any other Commissioner comments? So, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2023-06, subject to three additional conditions, which would be to prohibit smoking within the context of outdoor dining, create a 50-foot minimum setback to any residential, as well as recommend the permitting renewal provisions to consider the establishment's track record in maintaining outdoor dining. Those would be the three conditions that I would recommend. If, if you all would like to add additional ones that I've not captured.
So, I would add the loitering?
Could you formulate that as a condition?
I would probably tag it on to the end of, you know, dining closes at 9:30 and thereafter, there's no loitering permitted in the outdoor dining area.
Anybody else? Okay, so what I have is no smoking in outdoor dining, 50-foot setbacks to any residential, no loitering permitted in outdoor dining, as well as renewal, renewal would be predicated upon considering the track record of outdoor dining at that restaurant. It's the best way that I can formulate that. Can I get a second? Second by Brubaker. All in favor?
Aye.
Four. So, Brubaker, Fruman, Vines, and LaHoda. Against? Kim, Nat, Golis. It's tied, and Varanhorst. Where do we go from here?
That, it's a, it's a no recommendation. It would go as a no recommendation to the board, no action taken, essentially.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Could we make a recommendation that someone present this to us in a way that a planning commission should have, have an issue like this be seen?
Well, you made, Stephen, you made that point last, last meeting when Commissioner Farhi was here.
Yes.
Where this gentleman, where you made the point about a court of law, where there's no representation. Well, I have yet to see someone from Flippin' Bailey's or anyone else here, and Commissioner Farhi's...
Just to that point, though, just to that point, they did attend the Board of Commissioners meeting.
They did.
Okay.
One point.
Not that that solves the problem.
Yeah. But even going back to your point, Stephen, is that if you had, if someone's coming back to committee, you would still have representation of ownership, one way or the other.
But we're being asked to consider something and an impact on the community. I've yet to see where these buildings are, where exactly the, the outdoor seating is, how far away the community is. I mean, it's just, it's not in front of us. And it's, and it's, and that's what we're here for.
I, I think we asked...
Talking about smoking or not smoking.
Well, we, we were, we were invited to tour on Saturday morning in Garrett Hill.
But it's just a matter of an aerial map with the overlay.
I agree. I agree. It's my, not my job to go tour, I mean, I'd love to go tour Garrett Hill, but I'm not going to walk away with the idea of a comprehensive view of, of what's at issue. And I think that's what should be presented to a planning commission.
And I respectfully disagree, and I'll explain why, Commissioner Varanhorst. This is not a zoning hearing board application, although if a restaurant would like to make one and have a variance, they'd probably come to us and they would map out a plan of where this would be. This is permitted, this would be permitted use, obviously. What it does, so there's no burden to present, you know, on a restaurant basis, what the plan might be. We did actually address this with Mr. Norsini last time.
Regarding the specific restaurants?
Yeah, the specific...
I think you had noted that a small amount, maybe a couple of tables could, so everything on the outside goes by, and Mr. Fruman noted that, sidewalk width. So, sidewalk width isn't adequate in front of Flippin' Bailey's. It's not adequate catty corner across the street. It's not adequate at the Ale House. It was only adequate by Conestoga Style Pizza and that little strip there, and they would be very narrow, small tables, like two ta, you know, twosomes. And there was a location behind, or I guess in the back of the Ale House, where they could conceivably do that if they should so want it. But that was really, and then the new place, 113? Exit 13, whatever that is. So, conceivably, they could do something, they would have to alter things, and that could bring them to the zoning hearing board. We know the Flippin' Bailey's would have to go to the zoning hearing board also. That, that's for just that... That's for just that little area. I know you had mentioned a property that sold or partially sold, but that was pretty much what we spoke of.
Anybody else? Thanks, gentlemen. Motion adjourned?
So moved.
All in favor? Thank you. We're adjourned.